Five now, and they can just play catch-up. But let's get started. All right, here's Commissioner Ward. Okay. Ms. Johnson, did you want to tee this up, or go straight to Anna Marie?
Good morning, Mayor. We're going to go straight to our Development Services Director.
Okay.
Good morning. Anna Maria Avonte, Development Services Director, Mayor Commissioners. I'm really excited today to introduce Bernard Ziskovich and his team from Ziskovich Architecture and Urban Design. For the last 10 months, their team has been working and leading the effort to prepare an update of the downtown master plan, and we are today ready to share some findings with you and the public. We are doing an update of the master plan because the city process is a continuum, right? It's not a static process. It's a process that changes over time. The construction of the city changes with the circumstances, and we need to update the vision. So, over the last 30 years, and starting in 1994, the downtown established a master plan that created a vision for the redevelopment of the downtown area. At that time, the vision was basically a pedestrian-friendly environment with a mixed-use downtown that provided comfort for all the citizens. That vision has been implemented for the last 30 years, and we have been growing with that, to the point that in 2009, the same Ziskovich team helped us to update the vision. And we went from the original intent to just attract development to downtown, to just focus in 2009 to where did we wanted that specific development? Where did we wanted the office to be concentrated? How the buildings maybe got taller, but the saddleness got wider, and the environment got better every time. So, we are right now at the point that we're ready to do an update of the master plan again. Fifteen years have passed since the last update, and things have substantially changed. The city is experiencing the highest growth that we have ever seen, and the pressures for redevelopment are at the highest point also. So, it's important to go back, assess what we have done, reevaluate, and propose an update of the vision. And that's what we are doing today. It's fundamental that we protect what we have create or created, but also at the same time, provide room for growth and the new things that are coming in the city, and the new strategies and new pressures and new goals that we have. So, we're here, and Bernard is going to present the vision that he has come up with. Feedback from the entire community has been received, and we're here to hear the comments from the Commissioners. We're going to go back one more time to the public to present this, and hear one more time if the vision that is presented is in line with the community. And then after that, we are going to go back to basically draft the regulations that will implement that vision, and put in paper the guidelines or the requirements for the construction of the private property, or the development of the private property, and also the construction of the public realm, that will basically make the vision come true. So, Mr. Ziskovich, thank you for being here.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Bernard Ziskovich, and I represent the team. I have with me Darris and Suriya Yafar, Grace Perdomo, and Paul Lambert, who's been happy to come here today to talk more about the financial and the economic issues that are imposed in some of our planning. But as Anna Maria said, today is really about presenting an overall vision, and I think that the hope for us is that we can be certain that the direction that we're headed in is the direction that you want us to be in. So, what we're looking for in the way of feedback eventually is a response to the vision that is being presented, some of the highlights of what we're thinking about, and that will give us the certainty that when we move forward into the actual zoning regulation piece, that we are all aligned. So, today is a very important morning for us. So, we have had quite a few public meetings. We obviously know the prior code and the vision that was created, as Anna Maria says, 15 years ago. And what we want to do is give you a preview of what we're thinking. There are many things that have changed, and one of the aspects that has changed is the amount of public interest in this new update is really significant. We've had a tremendous three-panel discussions that were very well-attended. We've had multiple meetings with every constituency group that we've been able to identify together.
All right. Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
Because I hope you're not expecting us to read that.
No.
Do you have copies of this deck?
We've done, but we will send the presentation afterwards, Mayor.
Okay, so that's up there just to show a lot of -- because I can't read it, so please explain the relevance, please.
The relevance is nothing more in this case than a diagram showing all of the different public input that we've had. I don't think there's anything specific to this chart that you would need to see, other than that we've done a lot of it.
Okay.
In terms of the downtown transformation, as Anna Maria said, the city was already on its way in terms of identifying how it could grow, but we have to admit that when we did this last time, this growth has far exceeded, in speed and intensity, what we imagined would happen back in 2009. It's really quite an amazing story, to the point where a city of your size has now become a national destination is a remarkable thing, and I think that's why the importance of this moment is so significant, because it will be guiding the next decade or two, at least, in terms of how people behave in the city for their development. And just to prove that point, there's been a significant increase across every sector. The office market, as you know, has grown. In talking with Paul, I think we've had, what, three or four Class A office buildings, or more even, some still in planning. I have to tell you, that is extremely unusual. Cities are happy to get one new Class A office in their city within even five to 10 years. You're growing at an unbelievable rate. When we were here last time, one of our big objectives was to see if we could get a new hotel. You now have several. The retail sector, with the growth of City Place and the adjacent retail, has been phenomenal. And of course, you now have a burgeoning and very vital downtown residential community, and we think that that's only going to be growing. There are challenges, as always. Congestion, of course, is top of the list for most people, as is the affordability issue, the accessibility through transit. But we wanted to point out one thing, that the scope of our work is really the downtown core, and we know there are many things that need to be solved and resolved in the city, and we just want to make the point that not everything has to happen in the downtown. The city at large will be growing. There's ample opportunity for many of the requirements to be partially fulfilled here, but not everything has to be in the core. So, we want you to keep that in mind. The other is that West Palm Beach has been focused on itself, but as you grow, we also want you to think that you're going to be drawing people from the south, from Lake Worth Beach, all the way to Riviera on the north. We have to accommodate the influx from the west, which continues to grow, as we know that Okeechobee is a parking lot and some of the other corridors. So, the point is, you're now a destination that's more regional, as opposed to localized. People will be coming in from everywhere, all around, for all the new jobs, all the new opportunities, and we need to be focused on the fact that planning and zoning cannot solve everything, which is why we want to talk to you somewhat about the vision related to transportation and affordable housing, and, you know, the economics of the overall city, so that you can begin to appreciate, as we do, that the zoning will be implementing this vision. So, again, the point being, what we're presenting today is mostly ideas, and we're looking to see if you agree or disagree, so that when we go to the next step, we can make sure that we're aligned as we move forward. We like this term, "a downtown for everyone." We know that regardless of the economic status of people, we need a diverse community. We need people to be comfortable, and we want to make sure that there's something for everyone, and that growth has the opportunity to address all sectors. And for those of you that have heard me present this before, and especially the Commissioners we've had one-on-ones with, we know that not everything grows at the same rate. It's true with people, it's true with neighborhoods, it's true with cities, and what we've done is we've made our best, you know, guess at how we perceive the city and its current state. This is not a scientific research. This is more intuitive than anything else. But we know that across the board, West Palm Beach is basically everything from a highly-performing national-level, you know, bar, to the reality that some neighborhoods have not really benefited as much as others. And what we want to do is, we want to try to find a way through this vision, and eventually through the zoning, to take advantage of things that we came up with last time. The idea that there's a base, and after the base, there's advantages you can get in the past through TDRs. We have a new idea on how that might work. And also that there are locations where we should incentivize opportunity, and also, maybe because of the way that the city is now performing, maybe we should also look at de-incentivizing certain areas so that they don't get out of control. So, this is kind of like driving, right? We step on the pedal, we step on the brake, we manage our process, and what we're thinking now is that, in order to make sure that we can modulate growth and keep encouraging it, we may need to incentivize certain areas more, we may need to de-incentivize other areas. And we want to take you through that. So, the diagram is really reflective of that. I know it's not the best resolution. The darkest color is indicating the place where performance has exceeded by far great expectations, kind of world-class level. And the area that is lightest, mostly the northwest district, is areas that have not yet seen the growth that the rest of the downtown has seen. And in-between is the area to the east of the FEC, which has seen a significant amount of development, which we're very happy and proud to say has been the result of the zoning that was instituted last time. And the area to the west, where we have all kinds of new opportunity, with Vanderbilt coming in, with the new hospital, with a lot of vacant land and opportunity that we have to untangle in order to make sure that we can get the best advantage, is also an area that has been maybe not receiving the benefit of growth so far, but we see it as possibly maybe the best opportunity for new growth to happen. So, when we look at all of that, our driving forces, unlike other places that we work, where we're looking to stabilize, or the benefit of a community might be to get a new grocery store, which is something significant for disinvested communities. In this case, we're really at a different point in life, so to speak, and what we're focused on is how to generate and enhance the best quality of life. Quality of life is the key component here. We need to provide for growth, but we don't want to give up what we've been able to accomplish. We have great walkability. The city has made tremendous investment in landscaping, and streetscape, and public space, and open space. So, a lot of this thinking is, what can we do to keep driving that forward and enhancing that, but not so much of it that we end up destroying what we've already made? So, those are factors of culture, character, transportation, community redevelopment, to a very large extent today, making sure we have enough housing of an appropriate type and affordability that can be accessible. And of course, what are some ideas for new open space, for new park space, for new resiliency efforts, so that you can be ahead of the issues and not trying to be catching up? So, what we've come up with are some generally big ideas that, again, I'm sorry that the screen is the way it is, but we will get you what you need, but the point is that...
Is there any way someone can run out and make copies of this, so we can be looking at this? It looks like you're getting into some detail that we need to understand, and it's impossible to see it up there. So, please, see if we get hard copies of the deck.
We're getting hard copies.
Thank you.
You can zoom it also. Okay, you better stand up here.
Thank you, I appreciate the effort. I feel like I'm in the eye doctor's office, you know. Is that correct, or which one is better, A or B?
At least you don't have to close one eye.
Yeah, okay.
So, let me take you through this. What we're looking at are some big, big thoughts. One is that streets and the corridors are, in fact, civic spaces, and depending on how they're designed, they can also be recreational and open space. The other is, we want to advance the idea, and we know that the city is currently engaged with developing your own transportation impact, which is terrific, that there be a focus on trying to find a location for an intermodal, multimodal location, where people can get out of the car and have other modes that would be able to take them around the city. And so, what we're thinking is that when you come in from the west on Okeechobee, there would be potentially two locations. I don't know, do you see this thing that I'm waving around on the screen? One is in the western corridor, where we have an opportunity for a multimodal hub, basically across from the Tri-Rail station, where that location could be, we think maybe ideal, for a major facility, where the buses could actually enter the building, have a better relationship between the transfer, between the train, and the Tri-Rail, and the buses, and parking, where people could pick up shuttles and be able to move through the city in a way that doesn't require them to constantly be driving through the small streets, jockeying for parking, and basically tying up the whole place. So, that is one option, which we think is actually really a good one. The other one is down here by the convention center, where we think we could possibly work something out to propose that that could be an ideal location for people to have a massive amount of parking available, even today, especially considering that there's so much employee exchange into the Palm Beach town, where maybe we could get a shuttle from there to Palm Beach and through the city, and get people out of the car, because our understanding, I don't know if this is statistically correct, I think it is, about 40,000 cars a day go through West Palm just to go to Palm Beach. So, that, we think there's two possibilities that are open. One is far-reaching a future redevelopment. The other is repurposing, with the county's agreement, some way of developing and creating the existing convention center for that use even very, very soon. The next idea is to develop some new connectivity. As we know historically, the African-American neighborhoods have traditionally been segregated, but what most people may not be fully aware of is they were also segregated through infrastructure, so that the streets don't go through, the connectivity doesn't go through. And we now have a very interesting moment. We've got, to the south, we've got the redevelopment coming from the new college, and we've had a very good meeting, by the way, with the key people of Vanderbilt, where they have expressed and shown us, to some degree, what they're thinking. They don't want this to be a kind of a secondary impact in terms of their brand. They want to carry the landscaping through, they want to carry the integrity of what Vanderbilt stands for. This is going to be a graduate program primarily, but they want to be open to and make sure that they connect with the rest of the community. Specifically, they're very interested in the multimodal idea, and they're very interested, to whatever extent they can, in providing opportunity to open up into the northwest district. So, we're looking at connectivity in that zone. We're also proposing, on Northwest Seventh Street, an overhead pedestrian-bike connection, not cars, where we could tie into all the new redevelopment at Nora, so that we can begin to have the rail be less of a barrier, and have it be a more interesting and potentially economically beneficial way of integrating into the northwest district and tying it closer to the east. We're looking also at having what we call some slow streets and some other very oriented discreet streets that head north-south. We're looking specifically at Sappadilla as an opportunity for local shuttle and very open for bicycle and scooters and all of that, so that we could actually begin to think of that street as an alternative transportation mode through the city, instead of everything being on Quadrille, or Rosemary, or whatever. So, we're looking to open up new connectivity throughout. We also have a very, I would call it, an ambitious idea, notwithstanding the fact that there has already been a lot of discussion in the city. We're looking at this infrastructure piece as where is the moment of aha that you're now ready for, now that Clematis has been redeveloped, and we're talking about all this other redevelopment. What we're looking at is integrating all of the public space that you have by the waterfront into a new Central Park. Now, we know that that's not going to be the easiest thing to accomplish, because those that drive on Flagler love to be able to just cut through there rapidly, but when you think about the benefit of all the new development that's coming, what we're proposing is to tie the water's edge into the park in a very more literal way, and move Flagler toward the west, so that it becomes more of a local street where it has the green space. And we think that there's so much good that can come from the iconic aspect of a great park for a great city, that we don't want to lose sight of that just because today there's a convenience factor on the traffic issue. So, we're very much interested in that, and the reason this came up, it's actually not in our scope, is that when we did this last time, the referendum that existed in the planning and zoning on the waterfront edge of Flagler for development was in place, and it's now, because of new state laws, no longer valid. So, we need to, for the first time, change the zoning on Flagler waterfront properties, and we think if we're doing that, we need a big idea to hold on to, and we think that the Central Park is a very key component of how it actually interacts with the new issues related to the waterfront. Oh, I have to, how do I move this forward now that we've...
We do, before you move on, we do have a question, President Lambert.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to start with the most recent one about that park. I mean, I definitely agreed, having, you know, a focus on more open space, especially along the water. I moved here over 20 years ago from Cocoa Beach area, where everything is on the water, and I was surprised that we didn't have more on the water, so I'm grateful for that. I guess, maybe, I don't know if you're going to talk about that more a little later, or if that...
No, now's the perfect moment.
Comes later, but, I mean, can you describe this a little bit more, and about this realignment of the road?
It's kind of a linked idea. The first link is that this entire edge along Flagler, where you're looking at the private properties, we know that there's two, maybe three, projects already that have been discussed, where people want to come in and redevelop into luxury housing, or condos, or whatever. But we also understand that we have a time horizon for this plan, at least 20, 30 years into the future. So, with that in mind, when you think about what's currently on Flagler, you need to begin to think about, where is the property value going to change? At what point is it going to be opportunistic to tear down what's there and come in with new projects? And that's our mindset. Our mindset isn't today only, our mindset is 20, 30 years from now. So, what we're thinking is, as time goes by, it becomes more and more difficult to make major infrastructure changes. And we think that now is the perfect moment, because you've already grown to a certain point, you're about to take another leap forward, and this is maybe the only moment in time where we could take all of this, no offense intended, but hodgepodge of open spaces, and actually integrate them into something phenomenal, that will live for the, basically, the entire future of the city. So, that's why I say, it's not an easy idea, it's very aspirational, but there comes a time in the development of cities where bold moves have a moment. We think this is that moment. And we think it needs to be tied together with governance, so that it's not just a big open space with grass, that there's a really good design, it needs to be created by really talented people, and it will be a resource forever. But if we don't do it now, we're going to lose it.
Thank you. And does this reconfiguration open up new development sites in that area?
No. No. The idea, when we get to it, is we'll show you what we're planning on Flagler to actually increase open space beyond the publicly-owned, in exchange for more height and more iconic buildings. See, we think that, I guess, to just jump ahead for a moment on that one topic, we think that the skyline of West Palm is about to change, no matter what we do. So, if that's true, what would be the best possible way in which that could happen? And we'll get to it in a moment, but we think that the best possible way for that to happen would be that height and opportunity not create a wall of buildings. But we do know that there will be many more new buildings. So, our thinking is, let's keep the buildings thinner, let them get taller, and let's emphasize open space. And that way, we have a quality, back to this idea of quality of life. The theory is, if we can create and embed the quality, then the architecture and the value will follow. And that's what we're thinking, which is why the park became an idea, because if we do that, and we still have the same diagonal streets, and it's all chopped up, we've kind of lost the opportunity for that quality to be embedded into the city.
Thank you. Mayor, I had a question about another part of the map, too.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you so much for talking about the potential multimodal hub near the convention center. I know the residents in that area would appreciate that, because a lot of people use their streets for parking. I just wanted to know how Howard Park fit into that, and just see, is that being included as an area of future growth, or were... as an area of future growth or we're protecting that?
You know, you ask a great question that I don't have a great answer for. We've been looking at Howard Park, there's, but frankly, with the scope of what we've been dealing with, we recognize it as a beautiful asset. We know that we could probably dig deeper into it. We worked, we looked for a little while of trying to take a corner of it because ideally, if you think about it, if I'm trying to get people to get out of their car into something else, I hesitate to say this, but I'll just say it. The ideal would be to find a place at the edge of Howard Park or maybe where the power station is or somewhere where I can get them out of the car before they even enter the city. It's just that that park is so magnificent and it's not essential that it happened that way. We think that there's way through good planning and dedicated right turn lanes that we could keep traffic moving into the garage without interfering with Okeechobee with some good traffic planning. Got to keep in mind, Okeechobee is a huge right of way. And if we had bold vision, we could take that entire right of way and reconfigure it, I believe, in a much better way than what we have currently. We have a basically a huge median with grass and some overgrown royal palms. People will become very attached to that. I say it tongue in cheek, but the truth is, it's not a magnificent landscape. It's not really anything except a lot of open space that doesn't serve a lot of purpose. And in a different realm, in a different maybe study that we could do, not included in this because we're not transportation planners, but I know because we do a lot of urban transportation, we could reconfigure Okeechobee and make it flow better and have it be more beautiful at the same time. So the thinking here is, if we can take that right turn lane and keep the flow going, we could probably get to this garage without interfering with Howard Park. But you ask a really good point and and unfortunately, we don't have a really good answer. We don't know that there's some traffic issues toward the southern edge of Howard Park where people try to cross the street. We think there's, it's just a beautiful park, it could probably be much better. We know that there's a new recreational entertainment zone happening across the tracks there. It would be terrific to begin to think about, how do we integrate that? But our plate is pretty full. And in this form of an apology, I guess, I feel like there's really, we just haven't had enough time to to make that a priority in our study.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I have a list of questions that I'll save, but just before we move on from the Flagler Drive, can you just, will there be more explanation of what your vision is for this park and Flagler? Because I'm not entirely clear when you're talking about combining these areas for the Central Park. I just, if there's more specifics about, are you talking about just like, for example, where we have the Green Market? And I mean, are you talking about actually combining them in some way so that they're not? If you could just talk a little bit about, you mentioned moving the the street west, I guess that would be either a lane elimination or I'm not sure what you have in mind. I'm just, if you could give more specifics unless you're gonna be moving on to it, I know that this is gonna be a big topic.
Yeah, let me, let me talk about that because we don't have more specifics at this moment. Our scope of work actually excluded this area. But we found it very hard to think about how to change the zoning of that first referendum block without looking at all the way to the waterfront. So I can describe in words, we would like to get the streets that now bisected with diagonals in a pie shape out of there. We would like to be able to extend that sense of being on the water all the way into the park. We know that we would need to keep emergency access lanes available to access the park, so we're not saying it's cut off entirely. But we want to move the traffic west so that we can have a much larger green open space that could be waterfront. In terms of the design, you know, like I said, it's not, it's not really been part of our work, but we've been looking at it, but we think that there are different ways in which we could expand the movement westward, you know, maybe even by expanding the street in front of the buildings so that we basically are creating a divergent movement that would allow it to become more localized and not so much a cut through. We know that there will be resistance to the idea because people love the idea of being able to drive through that. It's, you know, you have to understand that that there's quite a few lanes on Flagler, there's no reason that it has to be so big. And what we're thinking is, once we make it part of the typical driving experience in the downtown, there's really no reason to have that cut through right at the edge of the water. So I don't have a specific plan. It would be fun for us to make one, but but conceptually, we're, we've, we've sketched it out in a very rough way and what we're describing is an idea. What we'd love to hear from you about today is if you, because remember, the objective for us is for you to say, we like this idea, we don't like this idea. So that's, we're looking for you to direct. If you say, we like this idea, then then we talk with with staff and we talk about, well, should we, should we take this deeper? Should we look at it more closely? If you say you don't like the idea, then we just move on to something else. So it's really in your hands, not in our hands. Anything else on this?
You said you had a list of questions. Did you want to go through the whole list now or?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Any other question? All right, let's proceed. Thank you.
Okay. How do I move this? There we go. Okay. So, next. We're looking at at where, where can we actually manage change in a way that would be appropriate in terms of the new intensity and development? Where should it happen? Where should we incentivize it? Where should we de-incentivize it if we do? So our thinking is that where this circle is, we're looking at the creation of a new western zone for the city. Now, why? Well, obviously, the first reason is we have more vacant land and surface parking lots there than anywhere else in the downtown. And it seems to us to be the right location for us to be thinking about, where is the next generation of new buildings going to come from? Where are they going to be able to be constructed with enough space? How can we develop enough infrastructure? And most importantly, how do people get there? Because the reason we tied this vision to transportation and mobility is it would be ridiculous for us to say, let's keep building more and more, when we don't have enough viability of moving people around. So in order for a city to grow, there has to be access and mobility, and that's why we tied it to transportation. So this zone is maybe one of the richest opportunistically viable zones in the entire state. You have FEC on the east, huh?
In the entire state.
In the entire state. And the reason is, there are very few places in the state of Florida where you have CSX and FEC within walking distance of each other. That is a remarkable quality that has so far not been fully realized. You know, we're happy to say, as I'm proud as the author to say, that we, we helped Brightline locate their stations and we're the architect for your Brightline station. We designed it. We got deep into the idea of rail and transportation. And we know, as we move forward into the next 20 or 30 years, there will be commuter rail. And Tri-Rail is commuter rail. And Amtrak, as sorry as it is frankly, has the opportunity to become more, more important, more regional. So think about it, you've got regional rail, commuter rail, all of it, right within this district. And what happens to be in between the two? The least developed part of your whole downtown. So we're saying to ourselves, well, if this story makes sense, this is the place we should really be thinking about, the new, the new reality for the downtown. And we think that we have a terrific head start. You've got a world-class university coming in, you've got hospital that's going to be coming into the Clear Lake area, you've got all this new opportunity, and we think that this is where we should really incentivize and complete the downtown core. So when we get to it, we're gonna be showing you that what we think is, this is the place we could have height, we could have new housing, we could have supportive technology for the university and for the businesses that are coming in, because this is, this is a huge opportunity. I'm only aware of one other place in the country that Cornell did in Roosevelt Island in Manhattan, which I visited a couple of times, where corporate entity and academic come together for the purpose of innovation and the creation of something new. And I think this is just, the the first step is Vanderbilt. I can't tell you how excited I am about that because this could become truly amazing. So we want to open it up to opportunity and innovation in a big way. Now, we have some challenges. We want to create an area where we could go up to what we're thinking is 25 stories. So we're looking at a fairly intense new zone in the city that would have ample opportunity for many things to happen, and it becomes really the bigger part of your downtown. In our, in our view, when you look at the shaded area down here, which has been the focus of the last 15 to 20 years, we're looking at that as where, last time, we created some incentives for new hotel and new office because when Paul Lambert and us were working, we were realizing in order for West Palm to grow, we've got to get other uses in here. And we created an incentive up to 25 stories. The base height is 10 to 12. What we're thinking is, in this case, because it's developed so beautifully and the quality of it is, is clear, you've also made major infrastructure investment, this area that is in shaded area, we're looking at removing some of the incentive. So we want, our vision of the city is that this shaded area would actually have a reduction in the amount of bonus, not entirely, because basically, it's been built out to eight to 10 stories. So with the idea that we're generating all this new opportunity on the west, we don't want it to appear as though the entire city is made of one cloth. We like the idea of this last 15 years of development to be somewhat protected and and to have its own scale and character, which it does. I think everyone agrees, we love this downtown. And let's put the energy into the western edge. So we're looking at upzoning the west and taking away some of the incentive east of the FEC. And that would balance out, we think, over time, an image of a city that would be, you know, really amazing. So when you look at it, and and I'm, I'm taking time here, I hope it's okay, I just want you to, to, I wasn't planning on doing this longer presentation. It was gonna be 15 minutes, but it's gonna be a lot more. Because I want you to understand the thought process behind this so that you can ask the best questions and and think about it. So when we look at it all the way from intra-coastal to Clear Lake, I think you're now getting the idea, this amazing park next to the water, a new skyline on Flagler, keeping the area that's shaded more or less at the height that it is, and then allowing the new growth to be west of that.
Do I have a question?
And we end up with, with a section line through the city that becomes really iconic and beautiful and maintains the quality of life.
President Lambert has a question.
Thank you so much. I appreciate what you're saying about wanting to incentivize west of Quadrell in that Fern Street area. I think you illustrated that wonderfully. I'm just concerned about the shaded area and de-incentivizing that because I just, you know, I guess you could, if you could talk a little bit more about, you know, the the density that we're trying to attract to downtown and why we would de-incentivize that.
Yeah, that's a great question. We're not de-incentive, we're, we're, we're trying to take away some of the bonus. So the thinking behind it is this, a lot of it has already been redeveloped over these past years. Think about it, between 15 years ago and today, there's a lot of new buildings, new housing, new hotels, and a lot of investment from the city in streetscape and landscape. We had this 25-story opportunity available all these years. People haven't taken advantage of it because the economics never supported it. But as the city grows, the economic underpinning of the value of property is going to keep changing. And we are concerned that we don't want to be in a situation where there's now a new desire to take advantage of an old zoning bonus that will now begin to once again change the area to the east. We now sit in a moment where this opportunity has been there all this time, no one has taken advantage of it. And we, we no longer see the need. We created it in the first place to try and entice one or two people to come in and build a Class A office building or a hotel. We don't need that level of enticement anymore. Now we, now the thinking we have is, let's put it to the west where we have new university, new medical, new innovation, and and basically protect what we've already built. Because, you know, at any given time, you can hire the next group to come in and change your vision and your zoning and change it again. But what we're thinking is, if if things start to get heated up to the west, we would feel remiss if the entire city ended up 25 stories east to west. We think it's good that there be a more historic core that we, like my example, we've gone out of the way to protect Clematis. You cannot build big and tall on Clematis. We want it to remain the historic street that it has been. So it's really, I guess it's kind of like cooking in a way. It's like a recipe, you know? We need a dash of this and a cup of that. And and we don't want it to all be one thing in in every location. So that's, that's kind of the reasoning behind it. But the main reason is, no one's taken advantage of it. We don't feel like we're taking anything away. It was a bonus. It was given and it can be taken away. And we don't, we're not believers that bonuses should hang around forever. They have a purpose. When that purpose is done, we no longer need it, which is why I presented it that way initially. There are certain areas of the city where we want to incentivize, and like you say, there are certain areas where we maybe want to take away some incentive, but we're not taking it all away. We're just reducing it down to 15 and 12 stories. So there's still ample opportunity. What else is there? We want to preserve Clematis. We want to protect the existing culture and character of the downtown. These past 20 years have done so much, we don't want to change it per se, we want to just add to it. If we move on to the next, we have diverse housing options and affordability, support for small businesses. So what we're looking at is really, I guess, the core of the zoning study. We're looking at this large area in here, as I've already described, as flexible and available for new redevelopment. We're looking at the Northwest District to take the edges and potentially create new opportunity there so that there is opportunity to enhance what's already a historic multi-use neighborhood. You're gonna zoom in?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And and then we have the Flagler area where we're looking at balancing the desire for additional height with open space and make sure that we protect views and keep it transparent. And we'll get to that in more detail, but if you've ever gone to, not if you've ever gone, I'm sure you've been, as you've seen the cities that exist that have a lot of height right on the edge, the the impetus is to develop edge to edge. So if I'm gonna allow more height and more density on the most clear first block of a city, in this case, the on the most clear first block of a city, in this case, the waterfront view, what we've been thinking is, we don't think that the skyline should be a wall of buildings. The, the distance between the buildings is the right-of-way. And with aggregation being of primary interest from an economics point of view, people are going to want to aggregate entire blocks wherever they can in order to redevelop them. And when you do that, you basically want to take advantage of all the possible frontage you can. Which means that cities that I live in, like Miami, the downtown is really nothing but a wall of tall buildings. The only gap in this city is the street. So we're, we're looking at, that's what we mean by balancing height with open space and protecting views. I'll show you a slide later what we mean. But we do think that this is one of the zones that will change dramatically. We also think the western TOD area will change. We know there's a tremendous amount of investment currently going on in Nora. And we have the Brelsford Park area that we want to get a handle on before it changes also dramatically. So we're going to be taking you through that. But basically, the overall idea is to provide more housing options and more planned opportunity for the downtown. What's next? There we go.
We have a question.
Open space. Any questions on that?
Sorry, I have a question just on your slide before. You and I had talked on Friday that you mentioned, I know you'll be coming to the community meeting for the CRA in a few weeks. So that you had mentioned that this presentation today would primarily not include the northwest because we still have some things to talk to the neighborhood about and work out. So I just wanted to go on record in saying that because the slide about community redevelopment has a lot of shaded areas for the northwest that we're not talking about right now. And I don't want to just skip over that. But I also know that we want to have more community engagement with the neighborhood before you're bringing this portion of it to the commission to talk about.
Correct. I, I agree 100%. This, this is the same presentation, because I've had it with each of you, that we've shown you by Zoom. And we didn't want to change it because we wanted the public to have the transparency that you had. So we've basically left it untouched. But we did agree, and we do agree, that it has been difficult for us to get a handle on what the northwest district community really wants. And we're very much looking forward to the next meeting as an opportunity to pull everybody together and, and discuss it. We have had conversations with some people, but it's correct that we've never had a sense that we've had a true community conversation yet. So we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
So it's here for the sake of transparency. I appreciate the comment. Open space and resiliency, I've already addressed a lot of that. We're looking at the waterfront as the historic civic park for the, for the city. We're also looking at the Clear Lake area as a shaded and flexible public space where we could make more edges available to people in the form of trails, running paths. In our public discussions, we have had people come up to us and say how much they enjoy the parts that are open. Couldn't we open up more? We think it's a great public asset and we should look at that. We also feel that as development happens in the western core, that we knew, we need what we call a new anchor park on the west. It would be great to find a way to get enough land to have a larger public space on the western edge of, of the downtown. And then, of course, the Flagler waterfront area.
What does it mean by, I'm sorry, may I ask you? What is, what do you mean by an anchor park?
What I mean is, and by an anchor is something of enough scale to be a destination point. Not a pocket park, not an edge park. Something large enough to be a central open space for what we believe will be a significant amount of new housing and students. And, you know, so we, we need to find it because it's been, we have not yet been able to identify a public space that you own where we could say, let's make it a park. We're going to have to work to find the space. But on that point, I did neglect to say one thing. In the idea of the, of the western redevelopment, one of the reasons that we're creating these bonuses is we, we are hopeful that the city, the county, and, and federal governments can find a way to take what's now a lot of governmental uses and see if we can reallocate that land by compressing those uses into a smaller footprint so that we can find more developable land in the downtown west. We're also looking at surface parking lots, like around the art center and the school, where wouldn't it make sense, by example, to build a parking structure? Instead of four surface lots, make it one and liberate three blocks for something else. So part of the reason that we like this idea of incentive is if we can create the right incentive, we could also perhaps make it, make it work with public entities, not just private entities. So part of our thinking is, for all these decades in West Palm, all the governmental services have been great. They've been a source of jobs. But moving forward, those are not necessarily, there's not a balance between the number of jobs and the amount of acres developed to those jobs. So we should compress them and find ways to move social security into a smaller footprint or any of the agencies that are currently there and then redevelop that west as a really beautiful extension of the downtown. And if they wanted to leave downtown and move to a different location, that would be fine too. But they could generate a lot of surplus property, a lot of public-private partnerships. And we want to open that up as an opportunity so that we can actually get this moving.
Commissioner Fox, I think has a question.
Thank you. Just to that point, I'm curious, have any of your stakeholder meetings included the county? Or is this, I know some of the things that you're saying are just a wish list of that you would like to see if these buildings became available. But, you know, a lot of these things are not up to us. So I'm just curious if these are...
We, we have had conversations with transportation. We've not had contact with county commission. But like I've said in the past, we do this work a lot. And we think that there are opportunities for inter-local agreements and, and discussions of surplus property. It happens frequently with school boards. It can also happen with the county. But what, again, we're trying to set up a blueprint. We can't, we can't implement it, but we can set it up. And what we're, the reason we want to lay it out is for you and your cohort of all the influencers and agencies that you deal with to use this as a topic like for a chamber conference, to think about how could we move an idea like this forward? You know, in any of the other inter-local situations that you have. If you have this top of mind, there's a much better chance for that to happen. We could also help you develop a public relations outreach or even a marketing component where you could distribute that to the county officials as a way of, of looking at it. But, but this is very much tied to the success of your city. It also is tied to the success of the county. So we think it is, we think it's a win-win for anybody that gets involved. So what does it all mean? Well, this has been a long, I hope not boring, conversation about the vision and how it translates into the zoning regulations. Because once we get the feedback from you, we'll know that we're on the right course. And then we work with planning and zoning to make sure that the regulations reinforce the vision. And we don't want regulations that will be ignored or that will not be appropriate. So this is a very important meeting. Now, with that in mind, let me just tee up one thing and, and then I'm going to ask Paul Lambert to come up. One of the topics of discussion that we've had significantly with, with staff is the TDRs and the fact that they are disappearing. So we have several issues that, that become important. One is, what do we do in the future? We have an idea that's relatively simple, which is, let's create a public benefits program where instead of it being a transfer, it's basically a, a purchase or a bonus agreement that basically has the same payment approach that the TDRs have. And the reason we're doing that is because there's been so much significant utilization of the TDRs that we don't want to devalue all that money that was spent by changing the zoning in such a way that there was a whole generation of people who had to pay for it. Now there's other people that get a free ride or whatever was the perception. Plus, there's a benefit to the financial viability of this because we still have a fundamental concept in the zoning. We have a base FAR, which you get by entitlement. And then you have bonuses which you pay for. So we're keeping that same system alive. And, and we're moving it into the future with some nuances so that we can actually continue to fund opportunities that come forward as the redevelopment of the city happens. So if, Paul, you would come up and explain the thinking, we could get your feedback on this as well.
Thanks Bernard. Good morning. So we've, we've been, this is, this is one example of, of how to benefit the city at large from, from the fact that you're, that you're offering incentives to somebody. You offer incentives, you need some benefit back for those incentives. And so there's multiple ways of doing this. The one I'm going to talk about right now is around, around affordable housing. Of how do you, how do you take giving people additional height or density and in return, getting additional units built that are more affordable to a wider range of residents of the city? But this could come in multiple forms. You can, for example, this is focused on housing, bonus funding housing. You could also have office, giving more office density that would come in return of certain additional monies that would come into a, a transportation fund to make improvements on, as it relates to transit and other, other funding. But, but for today, we're really focused on, on the housing. So, so in downtown, and this is specifically outside the northwest neighborhood. And Commissioner Fox, just to, just to be clear, we'll talk about in, in the northwest neighborhood at all. But this is really about, we want to present this to the community to respond to as opposed to, as opposed to kind of this is, this is all said, said and done. This is more, we're being able to give some, some context to it. Today, because the TDRs in the market are approximately $17 per square foot of, of incentive, what we're suggesting is leaving, leaving that the case. Now, all of these numbers would have to get updated on a regular basis because the market changes, right? Market floats and you have to, have to understand where the market is for, for some of these benefits. But nevertheless, that every square foot of incentive, square foot, that developer of that, of those, those units would have to pay $17 into this affordable housing fund. And that'd be inflated annually by inflation. But they would also have, have to provide another incentive as well. And it would actually be an option of which incentives. Because all of them have certain benefits, both to downtown, but frankly, more broadly to the city, the city overall. We didn't want to just limit the, the, the strength of, of downtown's market. We wanted to make sure that it benefited more than just the downtown. How could we, how could we allow it to, to benefit more areas of the city and more residents of, of the city? So, so we have, we have a series, a series of options. Option A, if someone has an incentive, that they would have to then build whatever units, in the case of housing, they could choose option A and they would have to build a certain number of units. 25% of the additional incentive units that are being built in the development would have to be, be affordable to families below 80% of median income. Why 80% below median income? As you, as you probably know, your, your programs now are graduated, right? Some at 120%, some at 100%, some at 80%, some at 60%, some at 50%. We're, we're working with clients all over the state in particular, and even outside the state, trying to say, hey, let's, let's try to simplify these policies to 80% of median. 80% of median today, just to put it in perspective, is a family of two, is a family of two of about $75,000 per year in, in median income. A family of four is about $94,000 a year. So these are, these are working households. They're, they're households that certainly, certainly have a substantial amount of, amount of income, but, but still cannot afford housing, certainly in the downtown and much, much of the city. And so we've, we're, we're working with our clients to try to set that, that standard because it gets very confusing trying to measure 120% of median, 100%. And all of a sudden, you have these very small number of units that are broken down in any, any given development. 80% or below also is very consistent with the federal programs, right? So for, for example, Section 8, public housing are all at the 80% level. And so we want to equalize this to what, what, what those programs are, are also. So option A was, they, they would build 25% of the units as part of the bonus, would actually go, would, would have to get, get built within the development itself. So that would be option A. Option B is that, that developer would have to be the responsible party to be defined. Basically, they would have to head it up so they could just not turn it over to some other developer. But they would build the equal number of units that are built downtown in, in, in other target areas as the city defines them, where the city wants to see affordable housing and mixed-income housing being developed. Could be the northwest, could be other areas throughout the entire city or the, the other area of the city overall. But in this case, they would have to build 100% of the number of units that are built downtown, the incentive units that are built downtown elsewhere, throughout, throughout in those, in those target neighborhoods. So how can you go from 25% to 100%? Well, the reality is, because the downtown units are going to get built at higher densities, they're more expensive, expensive to build. Heights are quite a bit different, which, which increases construction cost. And the fact that, that you would allow developers to take advantage of assistance programs to build affordable housing, you can actually get many more units built. The economics of it are actually quite, quite similar to building downtown or building the 25% downtown in the core to 400%, outside the core are very similar to a developer to, to make, make that choice. And so you get many more units if you're allowing them to build, build outside the core, the core downtown. So in terms of, in terms of expanding the affordability. And then finally, option C for developers that just don't, don't want to build units in their development or for that matter, don't have the capacity or not into building outside the downtown, they could pay into a fund of $75,000 per incentive unit that they receive in the downtown, pay into the fund in which they, in case the city can then go take that money as it does for the CRA within the CRA district, to be able to use that money elsewhere throughout the city to fund both, both rental housing and for-sale housing throughout the, the entire city. Why $75,000? $75,000, as it turns out, is pretty similar in terms of the economics on the other, the other two options for developers. A little, little bit higher to disincentivize them to take that, that option. But the other reason for $75,000, if you look at it today in the downtown, there's about, the, on, on average, developers are paying about $150,000 per unit of land cost for every, every unit. This is basically saying, hey, we're going to split it 50/50 with you. We're going to get 50% to develop affordable housing. You're having the benefit of the 50%, which, which encourages you to, to take the bonus and, and again, has some, has broader benefits throughout, throughout the entire city. The, just a... Yep?
The buyout was for condos only.
Right. And that, and the, and the buyout would, would have really the option specifically for the condominiums. So that would not be, be developing units in the, in the... In, in the northwest, it's a little bit different. The, the goal of the northwest, from what we've heard in, in our, in our meetings is, is that there's concern about encroachment, that the strength of the market is actually a concern to that, to that community. Because frankly, and displacement over, over time. So what we're, what, what the incentive program in terms of the northwest is to do something a, a bit different. It's actually to preserve affordable housing over the long term within the northwest, northwest neighborhood. And how would you, how would you do that in terms of these incentives? Well, for, and Bernard will talk about this in a minute, that there's higher density allowance than is currently the case on nonhistoric properties within, within the northwest. But if you take the advantage of those, those higher density allowance, you would, you would then have to develop 25 to 75% of units in, in, in those, in those developments as long-term affordable to families below 80% of median. Again, we're looking to, for... Again, we're looking for mixed-income housing, that's why I'm not saying it's a hundred percent, you have to develop tax credit housing, or you have to develop Section Eight, project-based units. But you would develop a certain number of units that would be affordable to families below eighty percent. And those units would have to stay affordable to those families for a period of thirty years, so long-term affordability. The maximum rents would be set at the eighty percent AMI, which today, in 2025, these change every year, are approximately for a one-bedroom fifteen to sixteen hundred dollars a unit, up to a three-bedroom of twenty-two hundred dollars per unit, so quite a bit lower than what's in the market today downtown. If you've been tracking it, you know, downtown units today for a two-bedroom are in the five thousand dollar range on a per-unit basis, so less than half than what the price is for downtown. And then if there's for-sale units, and those for-sale units should be affordable to families below a hundred and twenty percent of median, which today is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a family of four. And affordability payments need to be less than thirty percent of median income, sorry, thirty percent of monthly income for taxes, mortgage, and insurance, because that's the underwriting standard today on a thirty-year loan. So we've set up these two potential incentive programs specific to affordable housing. As I said, you could do it for a commercial, for transportation incentives, you could do it other ways, but these are two ways that you can recapture the value that you're giving as a city in terms of additional bonus, in terms of height, in return for something that we've continually heard throughout your community is kind of a critical piece of the community, and not insignificant numbers as well of units, as well as dollars that go into that pool.
We have a couple of questions before you move on this slide. President member.
Thank you so much. I'm glad we're talking about housing. I think you said it was a critical piece, I think it is one of the most critical pieces, affordability, it's, you know, top of mind for all of our residents. And Mr. Ziskovich mentioned in the very beginning that planning and zoning can't solve every issue, that we need to focus on our vision as well, and I don't know if this is part of your strategy, or conversations you've been having with, you know, our housing department here, with our CRA, but talking about a broader housing strategy, and how we can, you know, maybe make more strategic land acquisitions through the CRA, you know, just looking at how we can address this more holistically?
Yeah, thanks Commissioner, with the best last name, by the way, so, but, the, so it's interesting, the real question for us is, you know, your downtown, at the end of the day, is pretty compact. I mean, it's not a huge downtown, it's very walkable. If you, and this is a policy issue as opposed to, if you say, hey, we must have affordability right within our core of downtown, right? It's critical for us to have mixed-income buildings right in the core, then, okay, you're going to designate a certain percentage of units for affordability within buildings that are being built. We think that it may be more useful, particularly in terms of the dearth of units today that are affordable, that not only in the downtown, but throughout the city, and frankly, throughout the county, and even go beyond that, when you add Broward and Miami-Dade are all experiencing the same thing, to think about, how do we leverage the value of what's happening in downtown more broadly throughout the city, and even particularly target neighborhoods as you so designate? Because you can get many, in a typology of development, that's six stories for four, six, eight stories, you frankly can get many, the construction costs are dramatically less, land costs are less in those areas, and you get many more units built by leveraging what's happening within the core downtown. So yes, is it a bike ride away, or a short car ride away, or a bus ride away? The answer is, the answer is yes, but the advantage is, is that you're going to be able to get many more units developed. I should also say, it's hard, unfortunately, even a city of this size, I mean, it's hard to do this in isolation with what else is happening throughout the county, and so it's got to be balanced with what's happening elsewhere. But certainly, you are the, I mean, it's amazing, the level of all the activity that's happening downtown, and we've been kind of looking really at the economics of it, so different than when we looked at in 2007. I mean, night and day, right, when we were doing this, we just didn't have that economic engine. The ability to use that for the benefit of the entire city, and particularly around housing issues, is pretty extraordinary, particularly in the near term, and so we think this starts to get at some of those opportunities.
And I appreciate that thinking, however, I don't want any of our cities to be the so-called affordable housing district.
Yeah.
You know, we have to continue to look for ways to have mixed income throughout those areas, because if they're just where the poor people live, that ain't going to work for me. So I don't know, as we are going through our rules and regulations, there need to be similar incentives, maybe in some of those same areas, for small business development, or entrepreneurs, or something, all right? Because if you look at the history of historically, black neighborhoods in particular, once the middle class moved out, those neighborhoods deteriorated drastically. So we need to make sure that there is, that we're looking to have mixed income, and it's not just at the historic northwest, we got at the south end of the city too, you know, if you go west of Dixie. So, we got to have that top of mind.
So Mayor, just speaking to that, because it's a great point, and we, at the very beginning of this planning process, we were all excited, because we thought that we were going to have a guy by the name of Raj Chaney come, this Harvard economist, come and speak, you know, at one point to the group. And why did we want him to come in one of the workshops that we had? So Chaney is, is kind of, probably end up winning the Nobel Prize at some point, but the reason why is because in 2015, 2016, he did this study, which is, you know, for the first time really proved, I think people knew this for a long time, but really proved, what he said was, simply, a poor kid who grows up next to middle-income families over, you know, decades, has a much higher earning power and education, chance of success in terms of education and earnings, it kind of like shows it in numbers for the first time, than a poor kid, that same poor kid, if he was to grow up in a highly, a neighborhood highly impacted by poverty, right? And so it started to change even federal policy until about 2020, kind of started to go back in terms of, you know, affirmatively furthering fair housing was the big mantra, and that was really about how to make sure that we weren't creating these neighborhoods of poverty anymore, of concentrated poverty, and that was going to be mixed income. So I think everything that we've outlined here is with that in mind, in the sense of saying, hey, you need to have, you need to have some affordability, but the fact of the matter is, those are not healthy, we've learned over time, those are not healthy communities, and we need to be able to do it. So that's always been top of mind.
All right, okay. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. My, well, I have a comment, I guess, about the northwest, and I know not everyone has had the benefit of seeing some of the things that you'll be presenting, but I did want to share, because it is one of my concerns with some of the ideas, is changing the zoning in the northwest, making it, you know, more units per property, and more rentals on those properties, that, you know, I am nervous that that strategy leads to more absentee landlords and less homeownership, because we're allowing more, you know, apartment rentals and affordable housing, which we need the affordable housing, but it's just, I wanted to just go on record for my colleagues, since we were not really discussing that specifically today, but we are kind of talking around it, that the idea of having that much more affordable housing in the northwest, and allowing the zoning to change, I don't know how do we make it so that there's less absentee landlords, when I feel like that is one of the bigger issues that we have in the neighborhood, is that the homeowners that are there, many of them are new homeowners, you know, that they're trying to create something, a life for their children, whereas the person living across the street, you know, that is, has trees that are growing into the power lines, because the owner is not anywhere near to take care of those things. I'm just very nervous about that moving forward, and so I just wanted to make that comment. But I do have a question also about the options, option A, B, and C. You know, I think, I like the idea of having more incentives and different incentives, but, you know, it's always been hard for me to think about the buyouts, because I, we're not builders in the city, right? If somebody, it's a lot easier for a developer to have a buyout and give us the money, but it's like, you know, what do we do with that money to make sure that we're using it for affordable housing? And then option B, you know, looking at, I know you touched upon it, like, it's great, you know, obviously, the downtown area is the most expensive land probably in the whole county, so, and there's not that much of it, so to just keep adding affordable housing there is, it's a big challenge for the future, but I think part of the reason we've been doing it is because this is where all the jobs are, this is where the transportation is that we have in this city, this county. So, you know, thinking about moving affordable housing out to an area where maybe it's harder to get around, I guess, will there, in your, are you, I guess, proposing that there will be specific areas that we're talking about? Will we be able to, I guess, approve the area that is the second area before it gets built in the deal? I mean, because I think building somewhere in the middle of nowhere, that it's going to be a challenge, that someone will have to have a car and everything, that's an added expense for somebody that is looking for an affordable place to live. So I guess if you could just talk a little bit about what that would look like.
Sure, I mean, but just getting to the end of, end of your, what you asked, the second to last question, it is entirely in your control what neighborhoods would be the receiving neighborhoods, right? So if you feel a certain neighborhood is too far from the downtown, I mean, you set the boundaries of the neighborhoods, but what it does, what it does do is instead of just kind of limiting it to the boundaries of the CRA, it gives you the flexibility to be able to establish other neighborhoods and communities that maybe, may not have the benefit of the CRA being able to kind of pump money into affordable housing, to allow significant numbers of dollars be able to go into those communities. And frankly, you can set it up, so, I've seen in other cities, where you can make changes to those communities every couple of years, right? You can set it up, so you're revisiting, because things change over time, and so you want to revisit. So that's entirely in your control. But one thing I would say about the northwest, and this is, your concern at the outset was something that we focused on also, about the homeowners and everything else, but the reality, the reality is today, when we started looking at the statistics, it's pretty stark, unfortunately. I mean, as you know, probably, you know, likely, the northwest today is, what, eighty, eighty-five percent renter, right? I mean, it's, there's very limited fabric left of that historic homeowner, unfortunately. I mean, it's, I kind of kick ourselves that we didn't, maybe in 2007, I got to look back, maybe that was the time that we could have done something more, but the reality is now, it is a rental, it is a renter community. And, you know, from our experience, having some institutional investment in the community is not a bad thing, because there, you know, there's incentive for keeping properties up. It's very difficult when it goes to families, and then gets passed down generation to generation for a home that's in the community, to, you know, get all the brothers and sisters and cousins and everyone else to decide to reinvest, and that's why a lot of these neighborhoods, you see this investment, because that's, it's not, it's not kind of structured, it's not institutional investors. But the reality, the reality is, is today, unfortunately, that fabric of homeownership is not really that present anymore in the neighborhood.
You have questions before we move on? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Back to you.
Back to me. So how are you guys holding up? We have some more slides we could show you that are more specific to each district. I'll be brief, but we do want to make sure we have time for more questions, and for you to talk to us about how we should be moving forward. So...
We're strong.
Okay, you're strong. Okay, northwest district. We want to emphasize a couple of thoughts, because we're not going to talk about it in detail. Number one is, we're totally committed to the historic preservation of the district. We recognize the importance of it, and we've had very good conversations, not only about how to provide more housing, but also about how to provide more ownership. And we need to have the community meeting, and then we should dig in with Paul on, to what extent can some of these programs with the help of CRA and the city actually provide pathways to ownership? It's usually very, very difficult when there's a limited budget in a city, because you can build very, very few units with ownership compared to many more if they're rental, which is why most cities don't really have programs for ownership. But maybe we can figure one out, so I just want to emphasize that. We also want to say that one of the other ideas that we feel confident about promoting is connectivity through and to the northwest district, because we know that if we can increase circulation, we'll be way ahead of the game. So we'll save that for another time.
A question for one of our commissioners.
Just because you have it, and I know, obviously, I guess, according to Commissioner Fox, you guys are going to have a follow-up with the community, I'm very interested in the Seventh Street idea for a mixed-use corridor, and I wonder, just given I have a district with three, how you see that playing out a little bit, or how are you going to describe that to the neighborhood as far as what that vision is for, I guess, an S-mud, Seventh Street mud, mixed-use district?
Well, what we were thinking was, we have examples in mind, New Orleans and other cities, where the existing housing typology has turned into boutique-oriented small businesses. So we're looking at a ground floor perhaps of a small business, maybe residential above, could be a corner grocery, could be, you know, whatever makes sense, so that there's a localized area. We know that there are restaurants and businesses in the historic northwest, but there's no synergy among them. From a retailing point of view, it's always a destination. I'm going to go to this barbecue place, and when I'm done with that, I'm driving home. There used to be historically, a corridor in every city, where the black neighborhood had its, basically, its own economic commercial center. And we've been thinking it would make sense, in the context of this neighborhood moving forward, that we identify a place for that. Our thinking was, if we can tie Nora through the pedestrian bridge across the tracks to Seventh Street, and then continue that as a very low-scale, localized, community, commercial zone, that could become the center of a community. The problem with putting it on the edges is that the edges are barriers. You either have the CSX or the FEC, and everything becomes kind of an edge. So our experience is, you know, a district, a centralized district has a better chance of being successful than an edge, and that's why we had that idea. So we're not looking at commercial redevelopment, we don't want to target there, that's not the idea. Very small-scale, localized, imagine if you had your choice of two or three or four restaurants, and, you know, you know, some personal services and things like that for a community. That could be very productive and bring character back to the northwest, and then you build on that with housing, and that's kind of the idea. Let's take the soul of the place, try to reconstruct it with local businesses, and then there's a center of attention.
Thank you.
The quadril business district, the TOD, what we're looking for is, like I mentioned, flexible uses, focused growth, the area between Tri-Rail and Bright Line, and we want to make sure that we have adequate setbacks and step backs in the development, so that as we move forward, we still have a very nice physical infrastructure, that we now are in a place where we could create it, because there's really nothing of that sort there now. So it's an opportunity for us to really make kind of the new downtown. So when you look at it in detail, we're looking at maximum sizes for the plate, so we don't have run-on buildings that become out of scale. We're looking at height, that would be, like we're saying, up to twenty-five stories. We're looking at, one way of managing growth is to not allow any parking above more than five stories, so that we don't end up with massive podiums where... five stories so that we don't end up with massive podiums where, where people can buy an entire block and basically put something up that nobody wants. So we're building in the kind of organic limitations. You can't go higher than X for parking, you have to have setbacks so there's places to plant trees and have wide sidewalks. We, once you get to a certain height, you have to push the building back a little bit so it's not too imposing, and, you know, that's our approach to, to that. And with, obviously, the anticipation that we're going to have technology and offices and housing all mixed together in that neighborhood, it becomes very vibrant, which is why we said one of the aspirational ideas is a new park. We need to have open space and, and park space as well if we're going to be devoting that to the whole idea. When we get to Brelsford Park, I'm sorry, we have a question.
Thank you. Sorry, do, can you go back to the slide with the parking? I just want to clarify what you're saying because I, it is a question I am asked a lot from the downtown about parking in the future. I know, I mean, I, for one, I really wish we didn't have to drive at all, but that is the exact opposite of what, of what a lot of people are asking me about now because, you know, there's, we want to make sure that buildings have enough parking for the people that are going to be working there. So I want to understand what you just said about the parking, the size of the parking in terms of, are you talking about in terms of, you know, what the, the development will be, or that is a limit on parking that you're talking about?
Okay, so that's a great question. Depending on who you talk to, we have too much parking or not enough parking. The city has in the past created parking reductions that would be allowed so that in certain areas you don't have to build the code requirement, you could have less. What we're saying is, what we want to avoid are eight- and 10-story parking podiums because if you buy an entire block, you might be able to really create a massive garage and then use the rest of the land to bulk up on the other uses. So what we're after is a consistency that as you move through this new virtual downtown we're imagining, that we're not overwhelmed by blank facades and parking garages that get to be too high. So we're looking at, what are the built-in opportunities and what are the built-in limitations? One of the limitations is, you can't go more than five stories for your parking. Now, what that means is, the development community is going to have to make a decision. If I want to have five spaces per thousand to support a use, or four, if I'm going to build that many square feet, that means that when Development Services is reviewing the plan, they're going to say, no, you don't have the required parking. The, the parking will end up limiting how much you can build in the same way that the zoning will end up limiting what you can build. So we're trying to put in the qualitative aspects, not just the mathematical aspects, so that we can be sure that when the building is finally designed and coming forward to the city, that they have the authority in the zoning to say, no, you really can't do that. You're going to have to have less parking. You're going to have to build less units, you're going to have to have less office, whatever it may be, so that we get the right balance. That's really what it's about. We're trying to make sure that we build in the qualitative limitations so that we get the right balance within the building. Next, Brelsford Park, we know that Nora has moved forward. I mean, the big takeaway here is, we want to connect this to the broader downtown and also, as we mentioned, into the historic Northwest. But we do have a very large, small-scale area here in Brelsford Park, and what we want to do is, we want to maintain the character. We have a beautiful tree canopy there of old trees, we want to see what we can do to protect them. We want to, we've met with, you know, the main developers of the area, and, and we had very productive conversation that they should look at this as a master plan of this entire zone, and we're going to be coming forward with the recommendation that, that there be created a master plan for everything you see in this area so that when people come forward with development plans for any property, that it comply with the master plan. So we're looking at a small-scale, mixed-use neighborhood that supports the Nora development and is an extension of it. We, we're also looking at the alleys as being reconstituted for maybe pedestrian uses. So our thinking is, we're going to build in some of those ideas, and then because ownership here is really, by and large, in the hands of one or two owners, we think that they should come forward with a master plan first and have it be adopted as the basis for redevelopment, and then as the projects come forward, we know that they'll all be fitting in. The Flagler Waterfront, this is, I got to say, the most difficult part of what we've been dealing with so far. And the reason is that, to a certain extent, there's no consistency here that we've been able to find. The properties, when you go to the property appraiser website, like I'm sure you all do, and you click on properties, there's very few properties that are the same size as any other properties. We have massive size, we have tiny ones, we have every conceivable depth, you know, the whole, the whole neighborhood here is so unique that, in a sense, you almost need a zoning code per property, which of course, we're not going to do. So what we've been trying to do is, we're splitting the district because Clematis intersects, and we want to protect that view corridor down Clematis, and again, back to the idea of the park, so that we can protect Clematis as basically the gateway to the waterfront from the entire city. And then what we're looking at is balancing open space with construction space, and we have this idea that we want to have an iconic skyline because if we don't modulate what's allowed, we're going to get wall-to-wall buildings. So here is our diagram of what that means. Number one, we want the setback to preserve that open space character. So where you see number seven, we're looking at the big properties having an obligation to have a very large setback. We're looking at 75 to 100 feet. So if you imagine the water's edge through the whole core of downtown, you can now imagine that we're going to have an open tree canopy, public space kind of walk, an opportunity that's not just in the city-owned land, that in exchange for the new height and density that we're allowing, we're going to require a very large setback on Flagler. Now that's going to be iconic, first of all. It's going to be an amazing view to have this whole swath of the city so open before it starts to get tall and developed. The next idea is that the liners, and what I mean by that are the front-facing faces of the building, even where there's garage, would have to have what we call liners, your staff is very familiar with that, so that the liners are 100%, except for stairways and elevators, 100% lined with active uses all the way up. So when I'm walking on Flagler, I see apartments, I see offices, I see everything. What I don't see is parking garages and cars and blank walls. So this becomes an active, lit-up, highly landscaped, open space. The next is that the parking podiums shall not exceed five stories, but they may rise to eight if the valet or mechanically lined with active uses. So within the building, once you activate the edges with apartments, you can go higher on the parking because I'm, we're never going to see the parking. And that would allow people to modulate how they design the project. Now, the areas in yellow, this is really the big takeaway, is that we want to maintain what we're calling a view corridor or an open space corridor above a maximum height of, I think it was 12 stories, that would be built. So on Olive, by example, I could build up to 12 stories, but once I get above 12, 40% of my frontage would be open to the sky. So what does that mean? That means that my buildings will be taller and slender, not wider. Right now, the zoning allows for five stories. This is a tremendous change. We're proposing to allow up to 25 stories so that we end up with high-value property with high-value opportunity, but they have to have big setbacks, have to be slender, have to allow the sky and the openness to come back all the way through the city, and this would be the building form of the downtown waterfront. And what we're expecting is, these are the most highly valued properties, I think that we could all agree on that. You're going to have open views across, you're going to have height. I would say that the likelihood of it being mostly for-sale condos of luxury units is probably a pretty good guess. And with that in mind, we've been thinking that we don't have to worry so much about how do we maximize as how do we maximize the value, not necessarily the square footage, but we will be raising the floor area allowed, we're going to be raising the heights, and what we want is slender towers so that the city has this view even within, because remember, your city has hills, you get to see up and over, we have other parts of the city that are going to be up also at 25 stories. So I could actually be in the, in, in the western edge, on the 10th floor or the 15th floor, looking toward the east, and I could actually see through and not just see a wall of buildings. So that's really the main, the main event. We have lots of little, little side pieces, but that is the, the fundamental concept there. On the next page, the Quadrell Garden, we already spoke about that. We want to take away some of the bonus because we want to protect the existing character of what's been built. It's been built beautifully and with, with a lot of quality at the street level. And the market has already determined that eight to 10 stories is what it is because a lot of it has been built out, so we don't really see a reason to keep it up at 25 any longer. That was really just for a few incentivized projects. And then finally, we're here at this moment with the idea that based on the feedback that we get from you, we'll be able to know that you're in agreement or disagreement with any pieces or parts, and then that will help us understand how to go forward with taking this to the next step, which would be working with your, with your staff, which by the way, is the best we work with anywhere, we just want to put in that plug. Anna Maria and, and Claudia and Chris, and Chris at the CRA, and I got to tell you, you've got the A-plus staff, and, and they are so devoted to what you're doing. So the next step would be for us to work with them and, and start crafting zoning language to be dealing with the implementation. And also simultaneously, if, if you want us or someone else to be looking at further development of some of these vision ideas, I would encourage you to have that happening simultaneously so we can make sure that the idea of mobility and open space and all those things can become part of the effort to get the new zoning implemented. As I said, if we keep increasing the density of the city without also addressing the mobility, we're going to have a big problem. With that, I conclude my very long presentation. Apologies, but we're, we're very good for, for questions if you wish.
No apologies necessary, very well thought out. I, I like much of the aspirational impact of many of, of what you're suggesting because it, I think it forces us and following leaders to think bigger and broader about our city and not get so caught up in, you know, the weeds. Obviously, a lot of, lot of work to be done, but I, I, I like the direction.
Great, thank you.
Eyes one, like the direction which you said. Commissioner Ward and President Lambert.
And thank you, this was well thought out, and I appreciate all the outreach you've done thus far. Can you just, just specifically on the waterfront, talk to me a little bit? I mean, obviously, I know going from five stories to 25 is a big jump, but where, how did you guys end up at 25 stories?
Well, we had part of the city already at 25 stories. In our discussions with some of the attorneys and developers that met with us regarding some of the plans that they've been generating, that was also kind of a range that they were speaking of. We were happily surprised that nobody was lobbying us for 40 or 50 stories, as is being done in other cities. So there's, we felt frankly that there was a surprising alignment of a scale that seemed appropriate, not only to us and your staff, but also within the development community, that that was, that was a number that seems to make sense. And like I said, there was already an indication of that height in, in some of the other things that we had done 15 years ago. And when we begin to look at the balance across the whole city, that also drove us to some of the other conclusions, that we have certain neighborhoods that we maybe keep a little smaller, that we didn't want to see a thickness of height everywhere. So we, we, we thought, you know, it makes sense. I mean, you know, some cities have a lot of variability in the way they approve projects. You know, they have a design review board, they have many other methodologies that, that they go through to make that determination. One of the things that's so impressive to us about your city is, you've been very carefully focused on not allowing development beyond what's zoned and approved, which has given a lot of consistency to the quality. Nobody can build a 40-story building if the zoning says 25. So if I'm going to put my money into that property, I don't have to worry that somebody's going to block me, or that somebody's going to surround me. And a lot of cities don't take that into account because all these decisions are made politically. So you've been very focused on a, on a staff-oriented zoning, which is why we've been so careful about all the thought that's gone into each one of these, these decisions that we're proposing. And, you know, I don't, I don't really have another answer besides that. I mean, 25 seems to be the right range, could it be 30? Could it be 20? I suppose so, but that's kind of the argument of the beard, you know, what, how many paires does it take? It doesn't really matter so much that, but we need to pick something, and 25 seems like a number that we're already accustomed to and has been accepted in the community.
Thank you.
President Lambert.
Do we have approved projects in the North End that are taller than that?
I, I was trying to get to...
Right, I thought, because I know it...
That's my question, not me.
At one point, you know, we said we wanted the downtown to have the taller buildings, so are we limiting ourselves here? And now we have them taller approved in the North End.
Yeah, we have had that discussion, Commissioner. You have a couple of projects that are going taller than the 25 stories in the North End. The Rabelitch project is asking for a higher buildings, they're asking for 400 and, off the top of my head, 450, I think, feet in height, that is taller than the 25 stories that is the downtown. The 25 stories in the downtown are around 300 feet in height, 220, I think. The 5,400 that you will see, North Flagler, that you will see in the next weeks, is also at 350 feet in height, so it's slightly higher. The, I mean, if I have to make any argument, is the sites in the North End are different, the context is different. So that's why it's very important to take every context in a different way. These sites are more compact, the ones in the... The ones in the north end are larger, are like three, three-acre sites, so slightly larger. They have a single-family neighborhood next to it, and that has been a little bit of our discussion about is, is the height appropriate or not, but the contexts are different. But definitely, I mean, like, those buildings will be taller than the downtown, and originally the idea was the downtown was having the highest buildings.
I guess I just want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful about where we put the density and, you know, that, that, similar to the questioning that I had, I guess it's about this district here where it was shaded in the light green, that we were going to de-scale or, you know, I just, if, if we're looking for density and for people to use multimodal forms of transportation and other transportation modes, that we need to have the people in our downtown to do that.
Well, I think that Anna Maria said it. Here, we have density, we have walkability. I'm not as familiar as the rest of you on the projects you're looking at to the north, but I would suspect they're more isolated and they're not as walkable, that there's not a whole lot else going on. So, when you look at it as a composite, we have a lot of density that will be available in the downtown. So, I don't think we have to go beyond that height. You know, the streets, it's a street grid, it's very urban, it's a very different context than the rest of the city.
Commissioner Paduzzi, I'm going to work around, and Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I certainly, I like a lot of the concepts you presented here today. I like the idea of, of realigning Flagler, how that would work, I'm not sure, or if we could make it work, but I, I like the idea. Concerning the buildings downtown and the height, I like the idea of having more narrow buildings where it does let the light through. I'm not so sure that downtown is where, is where the height should be. It's where the tall buildings are supposed to be. And I'm not sure that it makes a whole lot of sense to limit the height downtown, yet have higher buildings to the north. So, you know, I think we probably need to look at that, but you could allow more height and still have narrower buildings where you let that light through. But I just think downtown is where the density needs to be, and it also is where the height should be, just because I think it, when people move into the downtown, they understand that there's going to be tall buildings, as opposed to the ones that are but are residential neighborhoods. But I, I like the ideas presented, and I appreciate your time today.
Do you have a sense or a thought, any of you regarding, because we put 25 on Flagler and also 25 in the west, do you, do you have a sense of, of that in your own mind, in terms of, should one be higher than another? Should, are you comfortable with the western edge proposal where we're looking at the innovation district and, and those things?
Or is, or is more the concern about the core of the Quadrel Garden District to be now not as tall as? Because right now, it's only 10 stories between Dixie and Olive, and then the 25 incentives between Dixie and Quadrel. So, it's only the front touch of Quadrel.
I mean, that is, that is a concern of mine.
I actually don't mind this concept of building around and having like an instability when it comes to what we've already developed here. I think it's interesting. I'm still digesting it, so I actually do. But I, I just want to make a point because I, I would, I get this confused sometimes in dealing with all the developments. High does, height doesn't necessarily mean density, right?
Right.
Like, the, the height that is going on in the north end, these are large condos, and we already have a cap. I don't remember off the top of my head. I know the Rabovich or Hizinga project was like 1,000 units.
Yes.
And then, we have the remainder. And so, that's been part of the discussion is if you want, you know, to be building, you know, we don't, we don't have the density versus, and that's been a conversation with the neighbors, is they don't want that density like a downtown would be. And so, I feel like we need to be thinking about that too, height with density, two separate things. But I, I do feel that I'm hearing different from the development community, at least along that waterfront. I think pushing and incentivizing this development at west is brilliant, and I feel like the only way you can do that is with incentives. And sometimes bonuses do fall to the wayside in other areas where it succeeded. So, you know, we kind of hit our goal, and then we shift other areas. So, that's a great balance. I just, I have heard differently about some of the development along that waterfront. And if we are going to be creating that open space next to the water and, and changing traffic, I definitely, like Commissioner Paduzzi said, I want to understand that change. I think it's fascinating, and I think it would be really, really cool. And we already have that, so maybe we do give a little bit. I, I agree, I'm not talking 40, you know, 40-story buildings like a Miami, but I do think that there may be some local room there as far as that. But I don't have an opinion necessarily on the 25 in the west.
Given the, the commercial activity combined with the different industries that are coming in, I would be supportive of even higher, taller buildings in that western part of our downtown, a, a, above the 25 stories. Because I, because I think there's going to be a lot of exciting commercial activity happening. And, and yes, when you were talking about those commercial buildings, now you're talking about more density. So, I, I'd be, I as one, I, I don't think the 25, I, I'm not offended by a height other than, higher than 25 stories in that particular district.
I think there's a lot of, there's merit to that idea because it's really a tabla rosa, right? It's, it's a blank slate right now. And, you know, the funny thing is, is that, one thing you should keep in mind, which was a good point you made about, height is not density. And density is not FAR either. So, you, you need to keep in mind that the way that this code has been set up that we're continuing to do is floor area has a maximum number. And we set that up initially, and, and I haven't mentioned this in a long time, but it's still the prevalent idea. If you think about a block in a city and you imagine a invisible, clear box made out of plexiglass, the idea is that whatever you're allowed to build can never fill that box. You have a choice. You can make it wider, lower, broader. You can make it thinner, taller, but you can never fill the whole thing. And the reason that you can't do that is we have a maximum floor area, we have a maximum height that you can put parking, and we have a maximum height. So, to the point that Paul was making earlier, if I'm building really high-value property that I'm going to sell for thousands of dollars a square foot, like the big waterfront units that are going up around you, I'm going to want as much height as possible. Because every time I go up another floor, I'm charging more money. And my building has to have sculptural quality, architectural design, something more iconic, because otherwise, people aren't going to pay that money. They don't want to live in a box with windows, they want something beyond, right? So, that allows that box to be filled tall. If I want to have something more affordable, a rental property, something more available to more people, I don't want to spend that extra money going that tall. I need to get my price more manageable. If I have affordable housing, even more so, which is the point Paul was making, if we allow it to happen elsewhere and I can get two or three times the number of units, isn't that better than having less units? You know, you could make that argument. So, those are really the key component parts. So, our, our whole job is, we've been trying to figure out how to find the right balance. And, and the most difficult part of the city for us frankly, has been the Flagler waterfront, because the diversity of, of property configurations makes it so hard to try to find a rule that works. But in good faith, we've always tried that no matter what we do in the form of our recommendation. And this is important for you to understand about us, we're architects. So, we have tested every single recommendation. We have more staff than you see, literally creating building forms out of our proposed zoning, just to make sure that what we're proposing as a regulation is viable in the marketplace and is attainable as a design and allows for that flexibility. Because so far, we've been able to say all these years, the zoning has not been your impediment. You can do anything you want within reason, but it has to fit within the zoning. So, that's been the big part of it. So, all of that to say, if you were to say to us, well, we would like to see more intensity in the western edge like the mayor is suggesting, what that means is we would change our setbacks, we would change our configuration, we would maybe let it go up to 30 stories or 35 stories. That would change, of course, how the parking works. The big question is, do we allow more floor area? Because if floor area remains constant as a maximum, then things get thinner and taller. They get carved out more, they get managed through design in a different way. So, you know...
And what I said, I don't know if the market exists for taller buildings out west. I just said...
Well, I don't think we're going to know till we get there, but I would guess that the market exists in this city for quite a bit of interest. I don't know what you think, Paul, but to, to, to build a building between 25 and 30 is essentially the same. Now, once you go to 45, 50, you're talking about another price point jump in the construction cost and a lot more area devoted to structure and more elevators. And so, my net sellable decreases as I go higher because I, I end up using more of my building to support the building, right? So, all of that to say, I, I think we, we could easily look at it to go to 30. But I can't honestly tell you that we have a good reason to pick one or the other, because we're still allowing the same amount of floor area, and that floor area is still going to require the same amount of parking. So, the difference is really just the look. So, that's why we focused on Flagler as being thin, because we want the transparency through. When we get to the western edge, not so much.
I was going to say, it's probably not as much, but I'm, I know we're trying to work our way around, so I know. Commissioner Fox, you had questions earlier.
Thank you so much. I wanted to ask you about the community engagement. I know that you will be meeting with the northwest in a few weeks, but this is the first time, you know, we're seeing this. I know that most of your meetings have been to gather input, but not to actually show the recommendations. So, I'm curious if you will be planning to do any more of that? Like, I know the downtown neighbors would really like to see this before we vote on anything, so I'm just curious what the plans would be going forward for that kind of engagement.
Yeah, Commissioner, we, the plan is to do, after these meetings, organize one community meeting to show the same presentation to the general public, so they have the chance to ask questions and make comments.
Okay, great, thank you.
President Lambert.
I was just going to make a comment to what you were saying, that I appreciate the view corridors and that a lot of thought went into not building a wall on our waterfront. I think that is something we can definitely all agree upon that we do not want to see. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Paduzzi. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I think this is a question probably for staff, maybe Anna Maria, you can help. But we're, you know, currently working on a mobility plan, a bike master plan, and I know a lot of those things are not in your scope, they're not up to you to figure out how everyone's going to get around. But you talked a little bit about hubs, and I, you know, I don't know if those are specific areas of, you know, who owns that land at the moment, so these are kind of like what-ifs. But we also have a master plan for mobility that, you know, we haven't seen as a commission. So, I'm just curious if there's any updates from staff about when we might see some of those plans, because I think a lot of this is going to have to go hand in hand. Obviously, when we're adding more buildings, it's going to be the first thing that people want to know, you know, people that are already worried about traffic, you know, how, what's the plan to get everyone to, to function better, get around better downtown? So, if there, do you have an update on when we might be able to see some of those plans?
Yeah, Commissioner. So, we have been talking about a lot with the transportation team, and a part of what we are trying to do is like the mobility plan and the mobility fee that was already implemented for the downtown already has a list of the specific projects. Those projects will help us basically allow additional capacity in the downtown and allow people to move in different ways downtown. Part of the goal is like to do a mode shift, so if we want to continue growth and continue allowing these capacities that we are talking about, we are setting up, and the mobility plan is setting up goals for mode shift, so more people move in scooters, bikes, walks, and the affordable housing that we're talking about, having more housing downtown and more affordable, so less people have to drive downtown. All, all those are components. So, the mobility plan and the mobility fee already have the list of that first five years of projects that depending on how much funding we get, we will start implementing. One of the discussions that we were actually talking Friday is, as part of the community benefits, when we're talking about this additional capacity, it will be acquired as a, as a contribution, the developer will have to pay for that square footage. The initial concept was those funds will be allocated to the affordable housing. It could be that a percentage of those could be diverted to transportation also, to support that growth, because the two of them go together. So, that was part of the ideas that we were discussing actually last week, to see how we can find additional funds to implement more strategies for transportation, to support even the transportation implementation, not only the infrastructure, but that, but the, the system that will bring people to downtown and move people around.
Thank you. In terms of follow-up reports, I know there was a question about the waterfront, your way report. And I was also kind of, I think I mentioned, trying to wait to see what this looked like, because I think that also works hand in hand with that. And I think we have that teed up for November, a workshop on the waterfront.
Yes, Mayor, it's teed up for November 17th. It was going to come November 3rd, but we have a conflict, so it's coming on the 17th.
So, we're, we're trying to get these in front of you around the same time, so some of the information you're hearing can hopefully still be fresh as we're looking at some of the other studies. Okay, anything else? President Lambert.
Just wanted to add, I know in the beginning you said there was an unprecedented amount of participation from the community, and I was able to attend a few of those meetings and events, and it was really great to see residents gathering around tables, looking at drawings, adding sticky notes or dots. And I appreciate you utilizing that information to, to create this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to whoever got us the hard copies of this. I can't imagine having to hear that report, trying to look at it up there. So, I appreciate that. I think it'd made it much more relevant to us.
Okay, so, our takeaway is keep going?
Yes, without a doubt. Without a doubt.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll be back in front of the commission to start the approval process, we're hoping, by probably January. Well, actually, January will be downtown action committee, then planning board, and then city commission maybe around March.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
And this, I don't have anything on the mayor's matters. Anybody else have something for the good of the order? Commissioner Fox?
I just wondered if everyone wanted to sing happy birthday to Commissioner Paduzzi today.
No. Y'all didn't sing happy birthday to me on my birthday, when, when we had like a 10-hour, went to 10 o'clock at night on a commission meeting. But happy birthday, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing now, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much, y'all.